Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissions to order. Good to see everyone. Mr. Brown has the medium improperly advertised. I see evidence thereof. Thank you. At this time, we're going to ask our Assistant County Administrator to please lead us in our invocation and our pledge. Please stand for that for Mr. Joseph Mosley.
Let us pray. Gracious and kind Father, we thank you for all that you do on a daily basis. We thank you for your many blessings. Father God, we pray that you give this body divine wisdom and insights to transact the business of the community. We pray that you be with them and discover them when you love. These know the other blessings where I send Jesus to Christ. And everybody said, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got to get back in. Yes, sir. We've got some reviews that, Commissioner, when we speak, just speaking to our mics, some of the folks at home say we're a little bit, the volume's a little bit low. So if we're speaking to the mics, we help out the volume as it goes across the airwaves or across the live stream. Thank you so much. Proclamation, Great American Cleanup, Dr. Karen Bell. She always finds a reason to celebrate.
This is our new addition.
You got a mascot?
Good afternoon, everyone. The Keep America Beautiful Great American Cleanup is not just a program, it's a movement. It's the nation's largest community improvement program using all of us to clean and beautify communities across the United States each spring. This year, Keep American Beautiful and its affiliates are taking the Great American Beautiful to the next level, making it the greatest. And we are all here to do this together. With a renewed focus to do more to meet community needs, Keep America Beautiful and right here in Liberty County, Keep Liberty Beautiful, will not just remove litter and debris, but embark on a mission to restore our natural parks, beautify our roadside, highways, shorelines, and waterways by planting trees, flowers, and gardens to bring color to our community, beautify our community space through art, lead community recycling efforts, and clean and restore recreation areas and playgrounds. By participating in this initiative, we are now, we are not just cleaning our local streets, but also contributing to the largest Great American Cleanup campaign. Our collective efforts will help clean up 25 billion pieces of litter and beautify 25,000 communities across America for her 250th birthday on July 4, 2026. And we are looking at March the 29th to be our Great American Cleanup for Liberty County.
This is proclamation for the Greatest American Cleanup. Whereas the people of Liberty County are dedicated to enhancing the beauty and cleanliness of our community, and whereas we recognize the importance of preserving our environment and fostering civic pride among our citizens, and whereas we acknowledge the transformative power of clean and green spaces to support and promote the well-being of all people, and whereas America's 250th anniversary on July 4, 2026 presents a historic opportunity for us to showcase our commitment to sustainability and community beautification, we, Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim our support for and participation in the Declaration of Action for the Greatest American Cleanup. As such, we commit to do the following on an annual basis. Organize three community cleanups to inspire our citizens of all ages to work together to remove litter from our streets, parks, waterways, and public spaces. Organize to reduce, to reduce, reuse, recycle experiences in which we champion and act toward responsible waste disposal and resource conservation among our citizens. Hold one event to celebrate our progress and achievements to help America look her best for her 250th anniversary celebration. By proclaiming our support for the Greatest American Cleanup with Keep America Beautiful, we intend to make Liberty County a shining example of environmental stewardship and community engagement as we work together to make our community cleaner, greener, and more beautiful for generations to come. Signed and sealed on this day, January 16, 2025.
All right, any questions, sir? And I also would like to say by doing this, we can keep America beautiful, have opportunities for us to do different types of grants, and we're looking at maybe making three gardens, three parks here in Liberty County to be a musical garden. So the flowers, you can actually go up and play. So it'd be like instruments. So we're trying to see if we can get funds for that and add something different to Liberty County.
I like to see that.
Well, you will too.
Come on around if you will, then we'll get this signed for you. Commissions, if you can gather around, please. Get the mascot. Thank you, Dr. Bell and team, for your continuous work keeping Liberty County beautiful. Financial reports, Ms. Samantha.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This evening, I am presenting the county's November 2024 financial statements. Starting with the general fund, as of the end of November, we have collected approximately 20% of our budgeted revenues and have spent approximately 37% of our total budgeted expenditures. Being five months into the fiscal year, our target percentage for expenditures is 41%. So we are, we are less than expected so far. We currently have 2.3 months of operating expenditures in our fund balance. This is up from last November, at which we reported 1.3 months. This will, as you, as you guys know, will turn around in January when we start receiving some of those large property tax deposits from some of the escrow companies and mortgage companies and escrows. Looking at the departmental expenditures for the general fund, there are a few that are showing ahead of schedule. Still due primarily to contract renewals that are payable at the beginning of the year and other vendor payments required to be paid upfront. This skew This skews the department to be, to show over budget, but on an annual basis, our expectation is that these will level out. This is the case for IT, our General Administration Department, which is our regional commission dues, Superior Court, and the bureaus of professional standards and police standards. Additionally, there are a few departments that we've identified that are showing unfavorable variances for November due to wages and overtime incurred primarily from the result of Hurricane Helene and the hours that those employees had to work. These include, I mentioned that, admin, maybe I didn't. These departments with the hurricane work primarily affected the admin department, tax assessor, and EMA. Other significant variances that I just wanted to point out, elections, but this is purely due to timing with the November elections. But as we move further into the fiscal year, this should not be an issue going forward. It should level out. Recreation, temporary employees is running ahead of schedule. As we've discussed in prior months, though, they are hiring or have hired some new full-time employees to, to take off some of that, the burden on their part-time employees. For the remaining departments that are showing variances, none are causing us any concern at this point in the fiscal year. We fully expect these other departments to fall back in line as we continue out the fiscal year. Turning the page over to solid waste. Currently, the solid waste department is showing a net loss for the year of 346,000. The revenues are approximately 27% of budget and expenditures right at 34.5%. Some of this, well, a lot of the revenue will come through the solid waste assessments, which are starting to be collected. And this will hopefully level out the, the net operating loss that we currently have. On the next page, the special revenue funds. The only one showing over budget for the current month is the E911. And this is due to timing of the payments due with their contract with Motorola. But we don't expect this department to be over budget for the year. Let's see what else. All the remaining special revenue funds are within budget and meeting our expectations at this point in the fiscal year. Now on to the sales tax reports. For sales tax, no, for T-Splas, I put that one first. We received for the month of November, 1,082,000 and have collected over 47.6 million in total revenues and spent 22.1 million on our T-Splastic projects. For sales tax seven, we collected 1.16 million. Since this splas began, we have, we received 21.3 million in proceeds and have spent approximately half of that, 12 million, in expenditures. And that's all I have for November, unless you all have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Probably. On the E911.
Yes.
What, what percentage of collection comes from now the cell telephone?
I can look into that. Joey's on here. Do you know? No. Yeah. I can look into that and I will email you all.
I'm just wondering whether there should be an increase from last year, the years past?
Just want to see the trend and, okay, what we can expect. Yes, sir. Okay. E911, okay.
I was looking, Mr. Chairman, if we had a budget on the solid waste collection. And just the disposal is, I guess that's going toward Broadhurst. Is that where it's going to Clint? And that's two to one. How many trucks do they have that come over here a day, Broadhurst?
Broadhurst usually pulls three trucks a day, three separate trucks, four trailers all day long.
All day long, yeah.
Yeah, they're just like anything else. They've increased over the years.
But it, do you think part of that is mileage from Broadhurst Clint, or do you just think it's on a ton?
It's on the tonnage, a decrease every year. And we, we keep up with it on our tipping fees and everything, but it's still, that number doesn't reflect it.
So you go, you all are going to discuss it during your budget time?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll see Coburn's in here shortly. He'll give you a rundown.
That's part of the reason you're here.
Thank you.
When it comes to, and I think maybe y'all answered this question last time, the hurricane overruns, that's, those kind of things are always going to be, Mr. Mosley, from covered through your reserves, through your fund balance, because you can't program for. So it's going to always be a, and it remind me, and it re-educate me. So the, the funds we get from FEMA, they don't cover staff hours.
It's the overtime.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, well, yes, we had to pay that, obviously, through payroll and we'll get reimbursed.
We get reimbursed.
Eventually, but the auditor is coming next, next mid-month meeting in February. And we did have some positive increase to fund balance.
Okay, okay.
So it's, it's paid from our reserves, yes, sir.
Help is on the way.
Yes.
Okay, all right, good, good. Any other questions for Ms. Samantha? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, I guess a follow-up, Samantha. So, so the same would apply to any costs occurred from tax assessor's office from, from what they do to? Because I know their staff had to go out extra hours. So, so the same would apply.
All those departments completed the required FEMA calculation forms and EMA submitted those to FEMA. So far, I think we've completed everything that they've asked for and we're just kind of waiting.
Now, I know we got accolades for having our paperwork done and done.
Yes.
On time. So does that mean the reimbursement will be timely?
We can hope.
Or do we still find out something in the same part as everybody else? Well, I guess Long's is on the way, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right. But once again, that's where that fund balance comes in. All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Long. While he's coming, I'm thinking I did the same thing for your predecessor. Commissioner, for those in the audience who are listening, that's why she gives out our, a fund balance report on where we are with that, because incidentals are going to happen and you have to have something to cover those times, i.e., the cost of runs for hurricanes, until such time as the reimbursement comes in, whether it be from FEMA or some other source for some other reason. But that's why the fund balance is, is very important to us. We try to maintain a certain level to ensure that we are able to hold the balance of the budgets. Did I do all right? Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be brief on this. Most of all, our contractors are back after Christmas break. The guys are back on the Island Highway box covert. They started back Tuesday afternoon. Taylor's Creek Construction Company has several projects with us. They're working on those or either have a schedule to get started on those. The Middle Park Pavilion is nearly complete. One of the things they're waiting on is the fencing that goes around the outside of the aluminum that looks like the wrought iron. It's just been a real delivery issue for them on that. So they are tracking and trying to make sure that we get finished on that job before February 8. And I've spoken to Commissioner Stevens. He'd asked about the septic system. And we did investigate and everything's done correctly on the septic system.
So it should be done sometime in February?
Yes, sir. Yeah, their contract end date is February 8. And, you know, they should make it with everything else except the fencing if it doesn't show up. But, you know, they're struggling and working hard to make sure that fencing is getting here. It's been on order and backordered for a while, so they ordered it in time.
Are we going to run to that same problem with Jones Creek Park? Because the same company that's doing it?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
So it seems to be the manufacturer and not the contractor that we have. And we'll, we'll look at, see if there's a different manufacturer that can did it when we get ready to do that.
So if they're going to be done in February, we need to be looking at a ribbon cutting date sometime then in the spring.
Right.
That's right. Other than that, I figured I'd try to go ahead and give Commissioner Stevens time for his nine questions.
I'm going to guess so.
Okay. Yes, sir. All right, that's all I really have.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question. Did, how about the, the road striping?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. He's supposed to be here this week clipping edges of the road. I'm sorry. He's supposed to be here this week clipping the edge of the road, you know, that where we have grass and stuff. He did start? Yeah, so he's clipping the edges of the road. He sent my inspector several little pictures of some road edge things that he's concerned about. And we're going to address those and he should be here in about two weeks to start putting down the paint.
Okay, sounds good.
When you say road edge?
I don't want him to show up next week when it's cold, because if it's not 45 and rising, that paint takes forever to dry. And then people drive on it and you get, you know, tracks down the road.
Road edge means there's some repair rate we have to do before he's able to do the stripping? Is that what?
I don't think so. I think most of it is something that's, we can work around. So I just got to look at it. Maybe a couple of things we need to do, but I, I just, we just got them yesterday and I didn't have a chance to look at it.
All right, Mr. Stevens? You good? All right.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, okay. Oh, you mean do it now or later? Okay. We have been requested by the city of Hinesville for a.
Easement.
Sorry, he handed me something. I see a typo that I had. I'm sorry. I should not have looked at it.
Your eyes went right there?
Yeah, it's like, really? I did that? Okay, so we've been requested by City Hinesville for an easement across our property along Airport Road that will be used for the jail, the jail site. What they're looking at doing is coming across our property right there where the pond is, Darcy Road. And then they'll come down Airport Road across our property. Where they're trying to put it is in the front part of the property. And it will not interfere with what we're trying to do as far as anything goes with expansions to the sheriff's office or anything there. So what we're trying to do is, you got, Mr. Brown gave you a copy of the easement plat that's drawn by Simon and Engineering, which shows the approximate location of where the easement goes, and he gave you a copy of the utility easement. We are recommending that you approve and execute this easement.
Is that the red line though, with the?
Red and green.
Red and green.
The red is not ours. Yes.
Oh, I see now. I see now. Okay. So the green is, okay.
Yes, sir. What this does is this gets, they're drilling a green zone water well just inside Long County. And this is their route to come back to tie to the City Hinesville Water System.
So they're down Lee Place Road where the well is at?
Yes, sir. It's down, you know, Clawd riding has a subdivision that's just down Harbin Road, just past the water tower. So it'll be in that new subdivision. It'll come behind those houses. There's a little power transmission line that runs down through there. And then it'll cut across a little bit down Dorsey Road, Lee Place Road. And then it'll cut across the board education property and then across ours.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, you can.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make the motion that we approve the utility easement request from the city of Hinesville. That's about it, right? There we go.
Motion second, approve easement request from the city of Hinesville to expand their water system, which we hope to one day be a beneficiary area. The word is out, the word is out, the word is out. All in favor, show your hands, please. All right.
Question about the.
I'm sorry, my friend.
I mean, we're going to let them have the easement. I guess we ought to be able to tap in for nothing. But I mean, I think we ought to be negotiating.
We'll work out something with them that. Mr. Long, you throw me off, man. Fire services, Mr. Darby.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Coming before you before tonight in regards to the Riceboro Intergovernmental Agreement. This is just a renewal of an agreement that we do annually for contracted services for the unincorporated area. Looking for an approval.
Keith Darby, this is a yearly, a year issue.
Yes, sir. These contracts get pushed out, this type of contract gets pushed out June of every year to the departments or to the, the governments to get back.
All right, Chairman, ten motion.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with City Riceboro.
A second, motion, a second, in discussion. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I'm just, I mean, there's no, nothing going to change as far as your personnel or having an add or anything else?
No, sir. No changes.
No, but, I mean.
No, sir. This is, this is to continue what we have been doing.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just going to make sure that, because Hurley here, they must be all.
How about now, sir?
Yeah, that's all right.
All in favor, show your hands, please. All right. Thank you, sir. How was the other agreement coming along? I know it's in the hands of the attorneys for the.
We met with him yesterday.
Okay.
He's going to circulate something to us by the first of the week that we can give to the board and then what.
Okay. And, and while you're standing there, sir, I'm taking some of that time. I, I made that announcement publicly that perhaps we should start some, even if it's an informal discussion with the city of Riceboro. Has there been anything that has come to you from, from my making that statement? I hadn't heard anything.
No, sir.
Okay, all right, well, I'll, I'll reach out and touch, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank.
Before he leaves, I was looking in, I guess, what, about the fire in Long County?
Yes, sir.
And it also said that, I guess, with the city of Waterville and.
Liberty County was there. Hinesville too.
We are, sir.
I appreciate y'all doing that. But also, do we have like a IDA with them as well? Or how does that work?
So that, the reference material you're looking for, sir, is a mutual aid agreement, and we do have a, we have a mutual aid agreement with Long County. And that is, to sum up a mutual aid agreement, we will come help them and not ask for any return cost. They'll come help us and not ask for any return cost. So we do have those with a lot of our neighboring counties.
Does that include Fort Stewart?
We do have Fort Stewart, Hinesville, the city municipalities. We are currently in the process of working one for Bryan County. They've had some transition and new leadership taking place over there. So that will actually come before y'all here in the near future to get signed. Generally, those mutual aid agreements are in place for five years and then extend an additional five years should nobody want to terminate.
Once again, you're right. I think that's, it's, it bodes well that we're able to help our neighbor out and.
Yes, sir.
And that they would provide the same courtesy to us, should our time, right? My mother says everybody has a time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Keith Payne, hello, sir. You got something to achieve before you?
No, I said, thank you.
Oh, thank you, okay, okay, okay.
I just feel for those folks in California that.
Oh, yeah. That wasn't a good, not a good look, as they say.
Good evening, as everybody doing. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Keith Payne. This is my deputy Kyoto. McCullough? Andrea Brown Lewis. I'm sorry. Our office is under the strong leadership of Chairman Lee Steele, board members Lloyd Bird, David Smiley, Susan Ammons, and Kevin Remlard. Mr. Brown asked me to come before the board to speak on the assessor's office timeline for digest completion. This timeline that we've set follows the statutory guidelines set by the state. Just to put this timeline together, there had to be a concerted effort between the board of assessors. Tax Commissioners, and Liberty County tax entities. That effort would need to be ongoing, especially with the new laws, House Bill 581, and new requirements that has added extra responsibility to the assessor's office and affiliated offices. The first part of the proposed calendar. First, I wanna talk about this. This is our office timeline. It goes from January to December. January one being assessment date. If your property sold prior to January one, then it will be picked up for the following year. If it's sold after January one, it will go on the following year. But this is our office timeline. I had to condense it for the digest part because the digest part lies right in the June-July area. But after that digest is completed, you can see our office is still working. The effort would need to be ongoing, especially with the new law. The first part, again, is the return time. Property tax return. What is the return? Forty-eight dash five dash fifteen, returns of taxable real property. All improved and unimproved real property in this state, which is subject to taxation, shall be returned by the person owing the real property or by his or her agent or attorney to the tax assessor or tax commissioner of the county where the pro- real property is located. This is the form, um, this is the state form, that if, uh, homeowner or business owner comes in, it's the P T fifty R, which is for real property homes, and whoever, P T fifty B, which is for businesses. This is a form that they can come in and fill out for us. Or they can just email us stating that they wish to return their property. As part of that return, please indicate a value that you wish the property to be for that year. Regarding the return of real property, this is an excellent opportunity to ensure that the information on the property record card accurately reflects the condition of your property as of January one. If any structures were added or removed prior to this date, please notify our office so that we can update our records accordingly. This period also allows homeowners to share their perspective on the value of their property before assessment notices are issued. Additionally, we can review your account to confirm that you're receiving all the homestead exemptions and benefits you are eligible for under state law. Take advantage of this time to ensure your property records are accurate and up to date. As we approach March, a new state mandated requirement effective January one will take effect. All taxing entities must calculate an estimated rollback rate and certify it to the tax commissioner within Liberty County. This rate will now require to, is now required to appear on the notice of assessment. Without completing this step, assessment notices cannot be issued according to the proposed schedule.
All right, hold, hold, hold. Give me that in plain English.
The, it, it, it'll, it'll actually explain in the next one, all right?
All right, you promise?
I promise. If not, I'll come back. When assessment notices are mailed in early May in accordance to O C G A forty-eight dash five dash three oh six, Liberty County property owners will notice a significant change. The traditional estimate of taxes shown at the bottom of the notice will now be replaced with the estimate of the rollback. So essentially, I've been working with the tax commissioner. What we will need to do is come up with a rollback rate early in March, or we, we're, we're, we have a schedule, I think, in March that we're trying to do. We're trying to do this in March. Um, again, the digest is not fully complete, but the new reassessed property, new construction should be complete by my office. And so that number is a major number used in the rollback rate. That number that you propose will have to be on our assessment notices going forward, and that is all taxing entities in the county.
So you, you have a tentative digest?
Yes.
And from that tentative digest, somebody has to ca- estimate-
Estimate.
-a rollback rate. How much does that rate become the gospel versus that me, versus that being a tentative? Cause if I'm John Doe tax, what, what, with the citizens, that's what the citizens are gonna see on their-
That's what the citizens will see on their assessment notice. Uh, speaking with other chiefs in other counties, uh, this is the first time that this is, of course, happening as of January one. And I'll be working with, uh, finance to come up with that number. But you, you, when your notices do come out, the, the actual notice, I'm sorry, when your tax bills come out and that, that, um, the estimated rollback is on there, it should not be higher than the proposed one that you did on the assessment notice. I asked, was there a penalty if it is? And from my understanding, it is not. There's a lot of, uh, as I'm sure, parts to this House Bill 581. Um, we took seven people to a seminar up in Macon to, uh, get better educated on it, and the teachers were not too much educated on this, so.
That's good news.
Yeah. So a lot has happened since January one, since it's actually in, you know, we actually have to do it. So this is the first year, and we're, we're in contact with different entities, A C C G, uh, Department of Revenue.
So, so there must be a grace period you hadn't spoke of yet.
Grace period as far as-
I mean, if, if I sit down and calculate this and I'm far off.
There's no grace period. It's about, it's about like putting, uh, the anticipated millage rate in the paper.
Yeah.
You can, you can always go less than what you showed, but you can't go more. So on the rollback rate, you're gonna take the rate of reassessed value plus your sales tax. It's gonna create the rollback rate. We've always done that in P T form. You've seen that, y'all looked at it. On that form right there. Uh, no, on a different form that we've used to set the millage. And you'll see the required rollback rate. So that's, instead of taking that and putting it into a value, which you had to do previous on the bill, which is never the same as what the bills end up being. They've now taken that away as part of that, that House Bill, which included a, a change in what shows on the di- on what shows on those assessments. So what you'll do is, you'll take the max rollback that you anticipate it to be. The problem is, you won't have the final digest by then. You'll have an anticipated digest. So what you wanna make sure of is you use a, a lower rollback rate so that you can always increase the rollback, thereby making the tax bill lower. But you can't go to a lower value. It's just the opposite of the millage situation. So, so that is what'll have to be calculated and certified. We will probably go to a lower rollback rate. Therefore, be the worst case scenario that it might be, because we know the digest is gonna grow. It will do a better rollback than what was advertised. That's what's been recommended.
Okay, so that's cooperation between your office, the tax commission office, and this office?
In the P T form calculating the exact rollback.
But they also must be done by the school and all other taxing-
So every taxing entity has to-
Yes, yes, every taxing entity.
To, to include the hospital and-
That's correct.
Every tax, truly taxing entity?
Everybody's gonna be on the bill.
That's correct. And generally, not generally, always, uh, our finance department puts the information in that P T form. It calculates the rollback amount, the anticipated rollback amount from a very, very, very preliminary number at that point. And we would go a lesser rollback, just to be sure.
Okay. So we assist the other taxing entities? I mean, I'm sure Hinesville probably does their own thing, but-
Well, they do, yes.
But everybody kinda worked together. You worked with the other?
We, we have to do the finance calculation.
Y'all, y'all, y'all huddle up as you would say. Okay.
Yeah, we've already met because of this.
Okay.
Mr. Walter.
You're on a roll here, and that, and that's great. But the, the one thing that is, um, I'm, I'm wondering about is, what is this gonna do with your timberland? Um, I mean, you'll have it. What was timberland last year? Will it be reassessed this year because of growth around it? Or will it still be listed as the same? Has it changed in the past five years? Forest land, paper companies that own, will it change, uh, any of that?
Uh, this House Bill or?
Yeah.
Uh, I didn't see anything concerning timberland or, uh, large tract properties. Those are usually under conservation, F L P A large, um, uh, timber homestead, they're usually under that. So their value, of course, differently, but-
Well, everything at one time was conservation, and now we're building houses on them, and that, that's what my-
Oh, okay.
-question is, is, you know, when will we catch that up?
We're, we're constantly working at it all, all the time. When property, when land changes use, we capture that use. It's now exchanged from large tract, and a lot of these large tracts are now being sold and cut into separate lots. And then we cut those into lots, so.
But what does that do to your joint property owner? Let's just say you've got three hundred acres. That's at, um, this, we, you know, right here, the red line is, uh, one ninety-six. Somebody over here has got fifty acres. Once that's sold, how will that affect this property owner's?
Well, the, again, we'll research the sale, see what kinda sale it was. Was it qualified? Uh, if it's a arms-length sale, then we can get a, a dollar per acre number to use in that area. But most fifty acre or more, ten acre or more, properties are under conservation. So their, their value is valued by the state, which they're given a huge discount, so.
I just wondered, we talked about the project, uh, Joey and Chairman and Board Members that's in the McIntosh area, that we were thinking about. The gentleman wanted to put the, uh, water and sewer in down br- behind Brights Lake, and it's all timberland now. And if it changes, what will that do to the other property owners in there? I mean, I can't see it doing anything but increasing their value.
Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but what, you know, you reach a point that there's a transitional change, uh, that generally occurs when land use change is dictated. The land owners around it may have some spinoff from that, but more so when prop- when that property's developed and the market sales data is created.
Right.
That's when that area's sales data is wrapped. And that's when they would see their biggest change, once new housing starts to go in there and it drives the price of rebuilds and housing up in that area. Then they would, that, that's when those homeowners that ride around that new construction would probably be most affected.
Well, we just mentioned the one there in Lord Iville. I mean, we know there's, that's timberland that's off a heart. And it's gonna be a subdivision, and what is it gonna do to the other homeowners there? I mean, you're gonna have a, the last house that was built there was twenty years ago, so you're gonna have a newer home. And, um-
Applicable.
Yeah, and it's, you just wonder what's conservation and one, wonder what's forestry and wonder what's- farmland. So I, I don't know. I, I still just can't get my arms wrapped all the way around it, but-
Well, best, best thing I can say is that if you're, you're, uh, homeowners or landowners out there, come into our office. We can sit down and see what type of exemptions they have. They could possibly do a state one preferential or F L P A. They may be able to get that. And we can do that before April first. That'd be the best thing.
Okay.
And that'll save them tremendously. That'll kind of shield them from the, um, development in the area.
Me and Mr. McCullough have a ride one day.
Okay, now we're at the point where assessment notices are mailed. When assessment notices are mailed in May, again, you will see a difference in the assessment notice. It no longer will have an estimate of, estimate of taxes, which the, I'm sure the, um, Liberty County is used to. Well, statewide, they've made this new form, which will have, again, the rollback rates for each taxing entity on the form. But it'll also have the rest of the information that's always had. Forty-five, uh, ability to appeal the property, the assessed value. And, uh, if they apply for homestead this year, it'll say if they got it or not. We're also working closely with the new tax commissioner, Jamie Sharp, and his team to ensure that all forms and processes are accurate and comply with statutory deadlines required for publishing the digest to the state. This colla- capo- collaboration is vital for maintaining compliance and ensuring the efficiency of the tax process. And that, again, you have, should have a copy. That is your proposed millage rate calendar that we're following. This part here, Board of Assessors, that is our in-office, what we've come as, as a group worked out as far as trying to get this done. Every three, I have one more, some other things. Every three years, the Department of Revenue completes an extensive review of the county. D R, D O R agents performed their review of Liberty County Assessor's Office in August of last year. This process included thorough review of the physical taxes, digest, to ensure compliance with state laws. It also verifies that all office procedures are being executed properly per Georgia appraisal procedure manual. Failure to, to meet compliance standards could result in a conditional approved digest or worse, a fine of five dollars per parcel. Liberty County was found to be compliant in assessing property fairly. The evaluation did identify insufficient staffing with the assessor's office. Per the report, based on parcel size and in accordance with I double A O standards, it has been determined that the county requires at least two additional field appraisers to meet operational demands effectively. We hope this can be addressed along with other department needs. The assessor's office has also published a new bro- brochure for the public, making it simpler for them to navigate the different departments with the assessor's office and answer common questions concerning the average of taxation. Two key points from my presentation, I would like to leave with the homeowners of Liberty County. January one, with the deadline of April first, citizens of Liberty County can and should return their property to the assessor's office. You can call the office at nine one two eight seven six three five six eight. Or better yet, come by the office at a hundred Main Street, Suite fifteen fifty, Hinesville, Georgia, three one, three one three. And again, the assessment notice that you get this year around May will be minus the estimated tax ro- tax estimation, and you will see a rollback rate in its place. For the Commissioners, this year's brought several important legislative changes to support you. The Board of Assessors has summarized the recommendations they received from their staff, their staff detailing the office plans to address and implement those changes. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, um-
I see your, your board chair is, is, is in the house. Does she, come, come, come say hello to us. I wanna say this, um, we, we're trying to not be here till midnight tonight, but this is, um, one thing I want to say is that, uh, uh, I forgot what month it was, but when Glenda came and presented to the Commission, and she laid out A to Z on the new appraisal rates. So, Commissioner Frager, I saw you trying to help educate folk who, who were so far off on, on their thoughts and ideas about the present. I'm not sure how to fix, uh, answer that. Don't let me forget to come back to you. Uh, but I appreciate that. But, but, but what you all are talking about now, I also see, maybe we can do a combo. We need to take the show on the road.
We do. We've talked about that, and we've actually been working with, um, we had a talk with Leah Poole. Um, she works, I don't know if she's still here or-
She is here.
And we're gonna get with her and work through the chamber and some different organizations to, um, Mr. Payne is gonna go and do some talking to different people. Uh, we also wanna talk with, uh, Patrick at the newspaper, and we have another lady here from the press. Um, so we're gonna do our best to get out and, um, get the word out, cause there's a lot of misinformation on Facebook. I think we've all seen that. Um, and we'd like to get the right information out there. It's a lot, and we do appreciate, uh, when y'all can come to our meetings. We, they're open, and we see Mr. Stevens comes a good bit and sits with us, and we love that.
And I just recently spoke at City of Walthaville, this, what was that, Tuesday?
Yes.
Tuesday, so we, we had a packed house. So we're trying to get the word out, definitely. This is a lot.
We want the right information out, and with the new law that just came out, that is, uh, a little confusing. It's confusing to the people that wrote the law. And we've been to several meetings to educate us about it. Um, and even the Department of Revenue, you probably said this already, uh, was confused about it. We, in the meeting, they had confusion. So we, I think we've got it just about figured out, worked out in our office. Um, so anytime anyone has questions, please pop down and talk to us. If someone comes to you with a question you don't know, send them to us. Cause these people in the office, they know the answers. If they don't, they know where to find it.
Don't I recall, the, the idea of going to the estimated rollback was designed to be- Don't I recall, the, the idea of going to the estimated rollback was designed to be an enhancement and improvement over doing it the other way with the, with the number?
It was, 'cause, 'cause what was so misleading was putting a potential payment number out there when you did not have the millage set and did not have the accurate data for the final digest, so it was, yeah. And, but, but again, nobody thought about still not having a final digest and being able to calculate a rollback rate in association with budgets.
Yeah.
Still needs to be corrected.
Sometimes our lawmakers, in the best of intentions, um, will, you know, write a law and, um, how can we say this in the nicest possible way, um, 'cause they all have the great intentions, but when it comes down to the actual
Application.
Application of the law, it's not practical, and they have to go back and readjust after a year or two. And I think that's, that may be, I think we're getting it worked out. But again, if people come to you with a question, please send them to us if you're not sure, 'cause we'd rather get them the right information. Um, and again, we're gonna be taking it on the road. And any opportunity you see, even your churches, um, wherever we may go, we'd be glad to, to go and give out that information, 'cause we want people to know, you know, what they can do, how they can, um, lower their taxes. Um, and we understand they're frustrated. We're taxpayers too. So anything we can do, we'd love to do that for y'all.
Okay. Commissioner Bluh has a question.
Mr. Payne, uh, y'all did a great job, your team, and also good information. Everything that was just said kind of changes my question just a little bit, because I'm glad to hear you're trying to educate Liberty County citizens.
Yes.
That's what we need on these tax laws. Um, if you could do it real quick and layman terms, I know there's a lot of people watching. They wanna hear about the rollbacks and what, what's going on. Um, the, everybody, a lot of people are just getting their tax statements this year.
Right.
So your rollback probably won't have a lot of effect right now. Probably gonna be another year, twenty twenty-six, possibly before you see something. If you could just real quickly, layman terms, help them to understand, 'cause they're watching like we are right here.
I can go off mo- what kind of phone calls we have been getting from, from them, uh, that they paying more than they paid last year. Uh, last year, I think that, that citizens know that Governor Kemp, uh, had, uh, provided a grant uh, for the twenty twenty-three year.
A one-time grant.
One-time grant. I, I was hoping he would bring it back, but.
We were too.
He, he, he did not. So I asked the citizens to, uh, look at their twenty-two bill and compare it to their twenty-four bill to see if, what kind of increase that actually was. And again, this is the best time to come by our office, before the assessment notices go out. Because after April first and this forty-five day period is over, then they have to appeal, and then it is a, a all-out full, uh, production. I wouldn't say production, but it, it's more to it than just getting the value changed after that. But the main thing that I wanna leave the, them with is we have an open-door policy, and our goal is to be fair and equitable to everybody.
Joe, I think you're gonna make a clarification?
Commissioner Bluh, we deal with you on the rollback rate. That, that's, that has always been an effect. It's something that's considered when you set the millage rate, is what the rollback rate is. So it really has nothing to do with
Four eighty-one.
House Bill five eighty.
Five eighty-one.
Putting a new rollback in or something. It doesn't do that, but it's easier to see or you.
Yeah, and we're not confusing the people. I, I hadn't thought about that.
We, we can show you that. There's not a new rollback coming. It's, it's in the computation of millage rate.
Yeah.
But again, uh, congratulations. Uh, you can come down to our office. We'll try and explain to you ourselves too.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Have anybody had anything else for me?
I wanted to commend, I was, uh, taking care of some business up here one day, and a young man from the tax assessors office walked some elderly couple to your office. He said, come down here, let me take you here. They can explain to you, you know, your tax bill and, and any, uh, you can apply any exemptions you may qualify for. So I saw that. I witnessed that. Yay! But, but, but I, but my mind went back to though, you know, all the education we tried to provide. There still seems to be such a gap in what the people know to be the actual truth versus what they hear, hear.
I can say, what, we've, I've worked at two different other offices. This is the most knowledgeable office in the state of Georgia, honestly. This is the most knowledgeable mapping, homestead. This is the most knowledgeable office in Atlanta, I mean, in Georgia.
Now, I, I.
Oh, Liberty.
I, I did. I did think about this. Um, I, I thought, you know, that young man left his desk to walk that couple over. Could we create something that they could just give, uh, citizens that may give reference to, uh, why we had to change their appraisal? A- and also come to your office and, and see what, 'cause he walked them. He, he personally walked them over there, and I thought.
The pamphlet that we've
Right.
put together.
Yeah.
We wanna get that out.
Okay.
That, that has a QR code.
Speaks to that, okay.
QR code on the back.
Yeah.
Um, it take, it will get them, uh, we frequently ask questions. I mean, it, this, we get the same questions over and over, but we don't mind, um, answering it again.
Okay, well, we appreciate y'all.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, appreciate y'all. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You, you'll be back again.
I'm sure.
Madam, Madam Chair Lady, any closing words?
See you next year.
Miss Teal? We are, we have a really great office. Um, of course, we're not perfect, and we're human, and there's, there can be errors. So if you find something, you know, as a citizen or anyone, if you find something that you don't think is right, come in and talk to us. And again, now, I'm a Facebook fan, but if you rely on the information on Facebook from other people, you might not get that right information. You need to come into the office. The people are there. They'd be glad to talk to you. Call them. Walk in. If you, if you can't make it during the office hours, call them. Someone will walk you through it. That way you get the right information and not someone else's thoughts that aren't correct. But we do wanna make it as easy for everyone in the county to understand things and to keep our taxes low as possible.
But if I go to your website, I'd find useful information, um, that would help me?
You should. You very much should. But now there are a lot of people who, um, are, some are older citizens or not as familiar with the website.
You're right.
And we wanna make sure that if you're an older citizen or any citizen, you know you can come in and talk to people. They're not there, we're there to help.
Mm-hmm.
And we want you to come in and talk to us.
Especially the, the questions that you guys get all the time. I would certainly put those on there, the most frequently asked, however you say that.
Yes, yes.
Now, I heard him say something. He educated me. If I, if, if I have a twenty by ten shed built on my property, I need to, I need to get a permit, but I need to come and notify you all that I've done that to my property.
Yes.
I, and I wouldn't have thought about that.
Yes.
But I think it starts at inspection.
Yeah, I know, I know to get the permit.
We normally cooperate, but they're different.
I knew the permit's required, but I didn't know I had to notify.
Well, we, we'll get the permit.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll get the permit.
Yes.
Yeah, but the main thing, especially with the storm
Okay.
last year.
Uh-huh.
There were a lot of sheds and all kind of other things that were removed.
Yeah.
That would be good, because when we sent out the assessment notice, we're gonna still have that value on there.
Okay.
So we wanna make sure that we move that.
If it comes off, it needs to come off, and that way it will go down some.
Or they might have built a larger one.
But they would've started after January one, so there you go.
Okay. So when, I know you have a rotation, and this is deep enough to go. So when will you go out again and actually physically, uh, assess, so you'll see that the shed is gone? When will that happen again?
When they file a return. All returns are wr- written. So if they file a return to alert us that something's going on, we, we'll.
But if they don't file a return, how will you, when will you know that the shed is no longer there?
We rotate the town. We split it into three
Zones or whatever, okay.
Parks, and each year, that was where the, uh, review comes from.
But if I want instant relief, come to your office and say, it's gone.
If you want instant, just let us know.
That's one reason the state, when they sent us down our evaluation, said, believe it or not, that we need two more people, because we are short. We don't have enough people to get out and do all the things that we need to do, 'cause we have a large county now. I mean, we, when I grew up, it wasn't, you know, it was not like this by any means.
Yeah.
Um, and we do have a large county now, and we need to be able to go out and get accurate assessments, so these bills go out and they are correct, and people won't have to get unhappy.
Just so, says another backside, I'm, I'm coming to you. It's important to the state, because that's how they, they receive their revenues also, so they want accurate.
And they come after us. And they will, after, they come to you. If they come after us, then they're after you as well. So we wanna make them happy.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Frasier?
Right. It, it just goes back to, uh, what, uh, the chairman was saying. And we all know the, the amount of broke we've had in the last ten years in Liberty County, the amount of subdivisions that we approve here, you know. I, I, I commend you all in that office, 'cause I, I know it's, it's not, it's not easy, but yeah, we, we do need to look at having some more help for y'all.
Appreciate it.
So y'all can be able to work a little bit more efficient, but.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank y'all, team. Thank you, team. Good to have you all here. All right. Uh, Mr. Payne, no less than every six months. No less than every six months, y'all, y'all need to come see us. Now, town halls, we may consider, you know, I know every now and then you would have a town hall, and maybe just have you, have them on the agenda, so we can look at that too. As well as those neighborhood groups would be good point, points of contact. Well, you'll have communication with them, do any of them come see you? Okay, well, good.
At this point, I'm available for anybody.
All right, excellent, okay.
Excellent so far.
Well, good. Good job, good job.
We're good with you so far.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Solid waste, Mr. Culbertson.
Great, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So we are, we are closing in, so pleasure to be back. Um, can you hear me okay? I tend to be a little above the normal height of the mic.
We, we do.
Great. John Culbertson, uh, principal of MSW Consultants. Uh, we work with, um, cities, counties, solid waste authorities, um, all over the country to help them optimize their recycling, waste and materials management systems. Um, had the pleasure to speak, uh, with the commission before. Appreciate the chance to be back. When I was here in November, uh, it was to give an update and to really highlight, um, how significantly the dynamics surrounding the provision of uh, uh, refuse, uh, removal and disposal and environmental handling of waste materials, how that had changed since the last rate study in twenty twenty. Uh, and at that time, it was my intent, uh, in addition to, to sharing that story and providing some of the, the dynamics that have impacted uh, the cost to deliver service as the county has grown and as the, uh, as we've had several, you know, years of higher inflation, we've had supply chain disruptions. So the attempt at that meeting, uh, in November was to foreshadow, uh, an expectation that uh, in order for Liberty County to continue providing the services that it provides, both for the county unincorporated residents, but also really for the county broadly. Um, we tried to foreshadow that there is a need to, to really look at all of the rates, and so, uh, the way, uh, solid waste generates revenue uh, comes from multiple sources, some direct charges to commercial businesses, uh, um, because the county runs a transfer station, charging tip fees at the transfer station, and then importantly, having the ability to directly assess residential households, because a great many of your households use the, uh, the drop-off convenience centers, uh, which are open to the public at different times. So in any case, um, over the years, the county, I think, has developed really a very robust and fair way to recover those revenues. But the time has come to look at the rates, and, and I'm here today to give you an update. Um, we have since delivered a draft report, um, that, you know, because of the complexity, I, I will share here right at the outset that we identified a couple of glitches in our draft reported some of the numbers. We've updated some here, and I've got a presentation I wanna deliver to you to show what, what these rate increases are looking like. Um, and, uh, we'll have some actions that I think we can recommend right now, and then we'll owe, I think, a final pass on a couple of the assessment rate schedules. Uh, but very soon, um, I, my understanding is that it will be necessary for the county just to revisit and uh, hopefully make the changes that are necessary, so that you can continue providing, um, a, a sustainable program. It's, it's financially sustainable, and it meets the environmental, uh, waste removal needs of the county. Uh, so with that, um, I'll go ahead, let's see here. I guess I have a clicker, so let's go ahead and get, see if I can figure that out, so. Hey, what, how about that? Um, so a quick project summary. Um, I mentioned, uh, so I mentioned, really, I've jumped ahead already to the cost of service and rate study, uh, where we look at the underlying, uh, rate mechanisms. Um, we actually, prior to diving into the full rate study, going back even further, we took a look operationally at the county's, uh, um, providing curbside service to Flemington. And so this, this project summary, uh, kind of lays out the two main components of our study. Uh, I won't read the bullets to you, but we are all the way down on the lower right-hand, uh, side of this, where we've delivered a draft report. Um, we've got some really good input and some really good QA QC review from staff, just based on their, you know, very good knowledge of the system. And so, uh, that hence, hence the draft report, this presentation has pretty close to final numbers, might be a few tweaks, but certainly appropriate, and I think feel very comfortable delivering where we ended up. Uh, a quick recap, um, as a result of the variety of market dynamics, inflation, uh, growth in, in the county, generating more waste, uh, all these factors, uh, over the years really have, have driven um, there to be a revenue shortfall. I think I even heard, um, in one of the earlier presentations here tonight, uh, that there's currently a shortfall in the solid waste fund, and that is exa- I think the number that I heard is, is almost exactly what we would expect at this time of year, uh, you know, given the current situation. So everything actually appeared to be tracking, if I heard it correctly. We didn't actually coordinate, so I hope I heard it correctly. But in any case, um, there is a fairly significant deficit right now, uh, with rates that have remained level as various contracts have escalated in costs and, and the price of delivering services has escalated, and tonnage has gone. In any case, uh, we reported this deficit last time. Um, there's a note, uh, we, one of the dynamics that's very important is that historically incorporated communities in the county that have provided curbside service to their residents have directed their haulers to deliver those m- the materials, the tons, to the county transfer station. And that enables the county to, uh, earn some revenue and cover the cost of the, the fixed costs of running that transfer station. And so over the past several years, municipalities have been opting to contract for service and, and take tonnage away from the county system. And that leaves the county still having to pay it for the fixed costs of operating a transfer station, but not having tons coming across the scale. The number of units goes down, ergo, the cost per unit goes up. And so that, that's a very dangerous dynamic, um, and one that, that we would strongly recommend that the county understand and then take steps to mitigate. And we're gonna talk about that here in our rate recommendation. So as a result, um, of the shortfall, we are going to be recommending and today are prepared to recommend certain rate increases already that we feel, we think those are gonna be final. Uh, and then we wanna give you an overview of some recommended increases to the residential assessments. So, um, the services, as I mentioned at the outset, uh, the forms of revenue you generate are tip fees at the transfer station. The, uh, you charge your commercial customers directly, whether they get the, you know, the front-load dumpster service with the front-load trucks, or whether they get a roll-off service, sort of a construction box, whether that's a commercial customer, whether a residential customer, uh, you know, maybe they're doing a clean-out, you know, an attic clean-out, whatever it is, and they, they order a, a temporary open-top box. Uh, so those services, uh, those are, uh, commercial collection fees. And then we wanna talk, we wanna conclude with kind of the most complicated, but, but really an important component of having a sustainable materials management system, is having that, those assessment, uh, revenues coming in. So, um, with regards to tip fees, so the tip fees at the transfer station have to cover three things. You have a contract to transport all the material that gets to the transfer station to a landfill and to dispose of that material at the landfill. So that, that's a contract. There are pricing terms in that contract. That contract goes up five and a half percent, uh, annually in terms of escalation. Plus, the county has to operate and maintain and keep up the transfer station. So you've got to handle, transfer, and dispose. Those are the three functions that a tip fee has to pay for at the transfer station. And so, um, we already know that the, the majority of that is a contracted amount that's gotta build an escalator. Um, certainly the county's costs also increase, so we are recommending, um, increases to the current tip fee commensurate with that bundle of underlying contractual services and county-provided, uh, operation. Uh, and we are recommending not only, um, a percentage increase one year, but that there becomes, um, and, and I think, I, I guess I don't know here in Liberty County, but consistent with other utility-type services, um, we are also recommending the notion, uh, of an expected annual escalation rate. Um, rather than having to let this go for, you know, some period of years, and then your costs escalate and things happen in the economy, um, we believe it is, uh, a best practice, uh, in running a solid waste facility or a solid waste collection service to generally have some built-in expected escalation, because, um, the whole time I've been doing this work for almost going on, believe it or not, thirty years, I've never seen maybe one year inflation went down. The CPI actually went down for a year before it went back up. So, uh, so we have just seen that become, uh, a recommendation that we tend to bring up and, and ask that, that, uh, you know, elected officials think about that, because you really are in a, a critical utility business. Um, the underlying cost structure works very much like any utility, water, sewer, electric. Uh, and so just kind of bringing that thought process here into sanitation, which oftentimes doesn't get thought of as a utility, but has so many of the same characteristics.
Joe, any reason we haven't done that, made an annual?
We, we have. I, so, so what's happened is that, uh, the, the contract that we have for haul and disposal is geared towards a CPI index for southeast region for solid waste-type operations.
Mm-hmm.
And that, and so it's not an automatic escalator in there. It is, it is phased, it is year-to-year, uh, by the CPI. And what we have done is passed that on. And what we have done is passed that on to commercial customers on a tip rate.
Okay, okay.
If it went up, we went up.
I, I knew that, and I did, I was not clear in saying that. My, my little soapbox there on escalation actually applies broadly across the rates and assessments for all the services. So, thank you for clarifying that. It's good. I apologize. I wasn't clear.
Everybody, not just commercial?
We, we have not passed, of course, we're talking about three costs, three costing centers. And so, that would not apply to residential customers. We're coming to that matrix, but it's handled differently on a different set of scales than, than the actual tipping fee. There's a portion built into that. Don't misunderstand. This is a pretty straightforward, you bring it to the center, we lay it, we cost it, and then we add those on.
Yep. And I, and I think the recommendations that, that this slide shows reflects charges that are going for use of your facility for parties bringing tons and for you serving commercial customers. We generally feel pretty comfortable recommending when you need to increase those rates to provide those services. We're comfortable in basically bringing these charges to you to consider. They're actually not, not, you know, not terribly high, but completely appropriate, especially the roll-off rate, which is going to be kind of towards the top of the slide, the roll-off pull fee. The county, just because of the private market to provide roll-off, so that's the big open-top construction box that gets dropped off at a site, and then you fill it up for a week, and a truck comes and takes it away. The county has not escalated its pricing along with the private market. And the county's not in the business to make a profit, but nor are you existing to be charitable and providing services. So, to cover your costs, we're recommending a higher increase in that roll-off box. So.
That would keep us competitive?
Well, it, it would bring you up into the realm of, of where the market would be and probably even still on the low end. So, it would be, it would be, we believe it would be a very fair rate. So.
Mr. Chairman, just while Clint's in there, about how many do you have like that? The roll-on, roll-offs?
I mean, containers.
Yeah, I mean, how many of them do you have? You think?
Retail containers. Retail roll-off customers.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
How many of them's out during the week? All of them?
Twenty and thirty-yard boxes, Clint?
Twenty, thirty, forty.
Forty's too.
I know sometime there's a waiting list. I remember that.
There are. And it's kind of like, you know, that is, that is the, the market type playing there. So, it's akin to being a gas supplier and selling gas at the airport. So, you're going to take a look at the regional rate. You don't want to lose customers. So, you're, so you're in the, you're in a business there.
Yeah. And I'm kind of interested. We have governmental clients who are in the roll-off business, who actually look at that business as a little bit of a, of a system profit boost that they can oftentimes be more competitive than private sector entities, because you don't have a, a profit margin you have to make. So, there's a little bit of leeway to operate fairly, generate a little surplus revenue and support other components of your system. So, we do have governmental clients that have taken a little bit more aggressive sense of how to do that. I'm not here to advocate one way or the other, but I, I hope to just bring some perspective on things that we've seen work elsewhere. But we feel good about this. This will, we'll get to recommendations in a bit, but we feel pretty good about the commercial rates.
So, what's our current fee? I mean, I, I see eighty-four and a half percent.
Yeah, we're, I think it's, it's just around a hundred, yeah, it's just around a hundred dollars. Yeah, it's just around a hundred dollars for pull.
I have a calculator.
There you go, there you go. So, and by the way, that, that is, that fee, that pull fee is strictly the fee to, for the, the county's equipment operator to drive the roll-off truck out to the location and then load the container and take it and dump it and then re-spot a new container. So, it's the collection component. The customer would also be charged based on the tip fees that we just talked about for whatever is the weight in that box. So, if they had six tons of stuff, they get charged six tons times the tip fee plus the pull fee. So, it's a combination. And that way, you really are, I mean, really, it's a very transparent, fair rate that anybody who needs that service, hey, this is the collection component. It's the pull, and you had this many tons times this tip fee. So, it, it should be a very clear, you know.
Am I wrong, was I wrong to kind of categorize this like an enterprise fund?
Well, that's, so, yeah, so it's a kind of a different, yeah. So, the money that comes into this is an enterprise fund. You mean in the sense that it shouldn't lose money?
Yes.
Correct. It should be self-sustaining. It should not be.
Shouldn't lose money, and you shouldn't try to make.
No, sir. It's not, it's not really making huge profit. You should sustain plus.
All right. Like the water? Yes, okay.
So, having touched on commercial collection and tip fees, let me now jump over to the residential assessment. Residential assessment, really, i- there's a bit of unfortunate timing in the fact that the last time we looked closely at the assessment was pre-pandemic in 2019, 2020. And so, the residential assessment has historically been more on a five, five-year stair-step type path. And, you know, historically, when we haven't had quite significant, never-before-seen inflation rates spiking up and a variety of other macroeconomic factors, we've been able to kind of stair-step up those rates and, and I think a pretty comfortable level, you know, three percent, five percent, seven percent every five, you know, nothing that anybody can really complain of every five years. I will share that because of the underlying impact to the cost of delivering service, it is necessary to have a more significant percentage-wise rate increase. But from a dollar per household per month or dollar per household per year, I, I guess, I don't know, maybe this is wishful thinking, but at the end of the day, sanitation is a remarkably affordable utility. I mean, we're talking about most households that are using the convenience centers and getting the benefits of the county system could be paying as little as three dollars a month, up to, you know, twelve, fifteen dollars a month. So, the, these are not humongous fees, although you will see that on an annual basis, you're going to see some big dollar jumps annually, but we're still not talking thousands of dollars. We're talking tens, twenties, hundred dollars. So, so I do want, I would ask to keep that, that in perspective when we talk about, yes, it's a bigger percentage rate increase. But if you look around other municipalities providing service, and if you look at frankly typical curbside service, Liberty County still remains very low in terms of service delivery, which is appropriate for a, a convenience center drop-off system as opposed to trucks driving down neighborhoods all over, everywhere in the county, which you do have some of in your incorporated areas. But because of the size of the rate increase that we expect to polish up and deliver to you, we actually are bringing two options. We're bringing the, get all the pain done at once with a, just a single, one-time, quite significant increase. And that was big enough that we thought, gee, let's maybe look at a two-year step up, and you have step up maybe sixty percent of that rate increase the first year and the remaining forty percent the second year. And so, there are pros and cons to, you know, basically, if you're willing to make a one-time rate increase and kind of deal with, with, you know, that pain all at once, that's going to most quickly shore up some of the financial deficits that you're running. That's going to, you know, kind of get your system right back where it needs to be quickly. The downside is that will be, you know, a larger shock, quote-unquote, a larger percentage increase to your customers. Therefore, you know, the two-year notion spreads that, that increase a little bit over time, but it will mean that you'll linger with some deficits in the solid waste authority for another year as the two-year rate path kicks in. So, there's a little bit of balancing act. I have no prediction or recommendation on which way to go. I'll show you the, the impact on returning some general fund loans, so to speak, at the end when we go through everything.
A quick note, the general fund does front all that money upfront as it pays all the bills, and then it looks to recover from the solid waste proceeds to pay it back. And so, it would mean a deficit to the general fund in the end is what happens that carries if it doesn't, if it doesn't run as a self-sustaining.
Do we, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. As far as people paying?
Well, it is billed out on the tax bill. So, we don't send out individual notices.
The commercial, the roll-on, roll-off?
The commercial, yes, ma'am. We track that monthly. Lori tracks that. Johnny tracks that, and that's on track.
Okay, they're, they're paying.
Pretty like commercial customers. So, if they, if they run into delinquency in sixty days, we cut the service off, and then we pursue collection.
Roll-on, roll-off, it has to be paid as it comes across the state.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, they're paying.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the boxes.
But charge a debit card in hand? Company, company card, of course.
They may not come back.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question before we dive in on a residential standpoint. I, I know you're giving us multiple options. We're looking at, like you said, one time, and we're looking at two years. Can we, and, and I understand what we're talking about on the commercial side. You were saying that we're, we're in the market range now, but we're still like at the bottom. I guess from business standpoint, supply and demand, you all are telling me that it's a hundred percent all the time, right? So, that means the, the demand is high. I understand we're increasing, but why would we stay at the bottom when we can move up a little bit more? It's commercial. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a business guy. I get it. If I'm, if I'm buying a house, renovate it, do whatever, I'm in it to make money. So, yes, it might take my, you know, my, my bottom line down, but I'm still in it to make money. Now, when we're looking at the residential standpoint, we're talking about our citizens. So, I would rather us hit the commercial a little bit higher and see what we could do to adjust the residential. That's just option three.
So, my reaction to that, very valid. We have governmental clients that have, that are in the, they're serving commercial customers that have adopted that, that very mindset. I mean, the market, in fact.
We're building houses. It's ridiculous around here. What I'm saying is, wise men told me when I was young, iron you britches when the iron is hot. And the iron is on fire right now. So, again, these are opportunities for us to grab some. Never mind. I'm done. We'll carry on.
Well, I think a, a comment I would make to that is if the, the commission decides that that is of interest, I think with some collaboration with staff, doing a little sort of, you know, secret, secret shopping, a little market research and, and trying to understand that, that is, that's an opportunity. That, bottom line, I, I don't believe at the conclusion of this rate study, we'll be able to come back and say, hey, we recommend you can nudge it up to here. And I, I'm not sure we'll have that data, but if that is an interest, then it is certainly something that staff could start looking at and that could be built in to the future. And it is, it is not a bad idea for local government sometimes to capitalize when they can for the benefit of all residents, which is really what your convenience center system is. And I mean, at the end of the day, most local governments are one hundred percent responsible for serving the residential sector. Many communities just say, hey, businesses, fend for yourself. You know, it's, it's you go find a private hauler. We're not going to do anything for you. So, for the municipalities that are in the business and able to provide commercial customers, there, there is much precedent among our client base and within the governmental sector to do exactly what you just said. So, maybe, maybe something for, for discussion. So. I am not going to try to describe this matrix before you today because there's a lot going on. But what I do want to use this to, to convey is that there are many combinations of how solid waste service is delivered within the incorporated municipalities in the county. And different cities have opted to contract for curbside refuse service and/or have curbside bulky waste collection. So, meaning a truck runs down all the streets and picks up big bulky items right at the curb. So, so there are differences in the materials that different incorporated cities collect. There are also, interestingly, and, and you wouldn't necessarily think of this unless you've been in this industry for far too long in some regards, but when a city collects curbside material, they, you know, they have a contractor, in the case of Heinzville, I think they, you know, they have their own trucks in there. And they bring that material to the county transfer station. That keeps your throughput high and lowers your unit cost to operate the transfer station. That transfer station is an important asset for Liberty County. Make no mistake, that transfer station is an important asset because it opens up your ability to find the cheapest disposal. Certainly, there's some transportation logistics, but that's an asset. And, and don't ever forget that that transfer station is an important economic asset that serves the county broadly, not just unincorporated, not incorporated, but that's really a county asset. So, if an incorporated community contracts with a hauler who then says, oh, I'm just going to collect your garbage, and I'm going to run it to my facility. I'm not going to take it to Liberty County. I'm going to take it to my facility in another county. Well, that lowers the tons going through the Liberty County transfer station. Well, those fixed costs stay exactly where they are. And so, now Liberty County has to raise its tip fees at the transfer station in order to, to cover its cost. Well, now that makes Liberty County's transfer station more expensive, and now other people start going away to other facilities. And so, it's, it's a downward spiral that we have, we have seen this dynamic play out a lot, and we need to, we're trying to avoid that. So, in any case, this is just a kind of a summary matrix. Yeah, we'll keep it going. So. Very well. So, I've got a couple of tables to go over residential assessments. These, so we did find a glitch in the report, which I believe you may have gotten a copy of our draft report. Again, a lot of numbers. We have three columns here. In fact, all of these tables are going to have three columns. We have what you're currently paying. You have to recognize there have been changes in how different communities are receiving service and who they're contracting with and where they're taking their waste. Not all of the rate changes or increases are just because costs have gone up. They also, the rates are changing, the assessments are changing because the circumstance for all of the communities and how they are using the county system have changed as they've gone to different contractors who take their waste at different places. So, there's both cost escalation that's causing increase, and there also are just changing circumstances for a number of the communities, which really drive some of the larger changes you're seeing. It's a circumstance change. And so, the far-right updated rate is a one-year rate increase. These are annual numbers, so divide by twelve, and you can get a sense of what those are on a monthly basis. And again, looks in some cases quite large, but on a monthly basis, we think very affordable in the realm of service. I'll, I'll just briefly describe our cash flow table. We used a, an operating reserve of ten percent as kind of a target that if you're going to be operating like an enterprise fund, you would like to have some kind of operating reserve, even though the general fund serves a little bit as a bank. But as you can see, with this one-year rate increase, there's still, you'll still actually have a little deficit this first year, even with the one-year rate increase. But because of the flow of truck purchases, new truck purchases, you have kind of a high truck purchase, and then it goes down weight very low. You can see you get into the black in the second year and begin actually staying on, you know, a little bit in the black, earning a little bit of a surplus. And any cash left over that's actually earned as a surplus then would go and draw down what has been drawn from the, the general fund. Two-year step up, again, same tables. You'll just see that there's another column. There's a set of year-one columns, a set of year-two columns. You'll see that the year-two is a little higher rate than just a one-year step up, just because if you spread your rate increase over two years, you get a little further behind the first year. So, you got to go up a little higher the second year to make up going a little further in the hole. But again, same, same concepts going on here, and same, same cash flow. Interestingly, with a two-year step up, you kind of skirt along a little bit with maybe one sort of break-even year in 2027. But we believe either of these rate paths, if adopted, will significantly shore up the deficits that are currently be experienced across all these, these rate changes, commercial, residential, tip fees. And a final line chart I have for you shows, once these rates are adopted, then we, we will begin reversing the, the essentially trend of drawing down from the bank of the general fund that started in the pandemic time period and had started to really ramp up. We shared that in November. And you can see that depending on which, regardless of the rate pass, path you select, that should start slowly bringing down the amount owed to the general fund. And it just is a matter of how fast, you know, kind of what's the right balance in terms of covering the full cost and reducing that general fund debt. So, you'll be happy to know I'm finishing up. I've got some, from all this, final recommendations for your consideration. There's, we, we, so I, I always say, hey, consultant recommendations. You know your community better than, than your consultant does. We sort of come at it from strictly a business standpoint. But recommendations, we do recommend that the transfer station tip fee and commercial rate increases go into effect. We will recommend that you select either the one-year or the two-year assessment increase to go forward with that. This goes back in time a little bit, but you may recall that it has become difficult with the growth in Flemington and frankly, the growth in the county. The county can no longer support the Flemington contract without a significant investment in turning into a commercial hauler, which the county is not. It's no longer possible to serve Flemington kind of on the margins. So, there's, we recommend that, that at the conclusion of the current agreement with Flemington, that, that the county no longer offer polycarb curbside service.
We've had that preliminary conversation, Mr. Brown, with the city of Flemington? Okay.
And, and I think, just going back to one of my opening statements, whatever rate increases you end up with, we do think it is getting to the point where as the growth continues here in the county, and frankly, as. um, and frankly, as, as our industry gets more and more specialized, the trucks get more expensive. We do, uh, would recommend some sort of maintenance es- uh, rate escalation on the assessments as well as on the tip fees and the commercial rates. That, that notion of having just kind of a, you know, a housekeeping assessment escalation every year, uh, we think that there is merit to that and would, would recommend that you consider. Uh, and I think, I think a lesson learned, boy, um, I, we, I've been involved in enough cycles here that Liberty County has actually enjoyed really very smooth rate increases for, for quite a long time. But this last five-year period, um, really highlighted what some, uh, macroeconomic disruptions can do. Uh, and we really just through poor timing, had that happen right in the middle of, of our typical five-year rate study path. And so our final recommendation is just to, especially if there are kind of extraordinary economic developments, it would be, you know, appropriate probably to revisit what's going on in the underlying, uh, economics of your solid waste system.
Would there be any merit, I'm just thinking about, um, back to Flemington, it's, it's growing leaps and bounds, no doubt about that. Was there any merit, another, another model would be to, for the county to consider being a, a mini E S G?
We, we did, and that's the, the unfortunate thing is then you have to acquire additional equipment, additional resources. Different types of equipment, uh, different type of resources, which is already a problem. We, we, we don't feel like we'd be able to honor that.
Yeah.
Trying to get equipment and trying to go to rear loaders and trying to hire additional staff to do that is not.
And, and, and billing appropriately, that was.
It comes down to mainly assets. It being able to engage those assets in a different type of work environment.
Okay.
We're, we're.
Okay.
Can't, can't find the assets, that's the problem.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, uh, I don't know what slide that was when, uh, I was talking about the fees for like the municipalities. Go back to like number twelve, let's see.
Kind of the, the assessments?
Let's look at that. With that being said, we're, City Waterville, oh. So, uh, again, City Waterville is going private, correct?
Yeah, they are, yeah.
And we, we had some questions about them probably not even using us to.
No, that's right. That's what he was saying about those municipalities that have chosen to pull their waste out of the stream, but we still got to maintain the infrastructure. So you see that.
You can see that.
And also there's a couple of other recommendations in the report that you see. One of those is to not give a hundred percent credit to those folks.
Because.
Uh, because we have to maintain the infrastructure.
Right.
So we're not, just because you have collection disposal by a private provider, you're still going to pay something to help maintain the county's infrastructure if you're in Waterville. Uh, and the other.
And possibly Flemington, correct?
And Flemington, possibly. The, the other little caveat that comes in there is even if you do have collection and disposal over there, uh, Waterville example, I think, and that chart had all the yeses and nos on it, whether it's optional or mandated. There are very few of those cities, other than Heinzville, that mandates a charge to your home bill for full service. These towns don't offer full service, so they're going to the convenience center.
That's what, right.
And if they want to take, uh, you know, they get that service from a private provider, some of them, uh, they get it picked up once a week. Private provider doesn't pick up bulky waste, that's going to your convenience center. So you got to maintain the infrastructure there and the transfer station that takes that garbage. And if during the week you decide wants it enough, you get an extra bag of garbage, you have a party, you have a Super Bowl party over the weekend, you got three bags of poly carts full, you're going to give it a sorry.
And, um, and actually you have reminded me, I feel compelled just to mention briefly, and I'm actually now sorry that we didn't add a slide. We actually went and looked at the tonnage being managed by the county through the convenience centers. So we know how many households there are in the unincorporated county area. And we know that residential waste generation is very range bound. You know, houses generate about the same amount of stuff. Yeah, you might have, you know, more people in a house or a little bit bigger lot, but generally speaking, it's very predictable how much waste the residential sector should be generating. And we just went through this exercise, uh, on an internal staff meeting, uh, just yesterday where we, if you look at the amount of tons coming through the convenience center, you would think that unincorporated county residents are three times more wasteful than any other household we've ever seen. In other words, it is, it is verifiable that those convenience centers are handling waste that are coming not just from the county unincorporated. That there are many presumably municipal residential households, possibly small businesses, um, possibly folks coming from out of county.
Very, very possibly.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm just saying the data is, are very clear and demonstrate very clearly that that infrastructure i- is serving its need, right? I mean, there's not, there, I'm sure that you, you know, everybody has some illegal dumping, but there is way more waste coming through the county provided infrastructure through those convenience centers that you're not picking up in the woods and on the side of the road, that is well beyond what the unincorporated households can be generating. So I think, and I'm sorry I didn't put that because it's very clear in the data when you can see exactly what that generation rate is, so.
Go back to the slide, excuse me. With the, with the red on it, with the, with the, um, show the three ninety-two.
This is, this is the one year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Why? Why would I start out that way?
Well, so it turns out the expense line item on all of these tables. So we look at, uh, we put, when we do forward-looking modeling, um, we look at the cash you would need to both operate your, you know, operate your system, direct operating expense, plus any debt service you may have, plus the replacement of vehicles and equipment. And so especially vehicle replacement is very, it, it goes up and down. You may have a year when all your vehicles are great, but then you have some three older expensive vehicles or getting to the end of their useful life and you have a big expenditure to replace those. And so that total expenses line item on all of the slides here in this presentation, as well as in our report, um, we reflect the cash needed to purchase new equipment. And that's why that expense line item is jumping up and down. You should see the revenue line item is much more of a smooth path because the revenues are growing with your customers, with the growth in your households and the growth in your commercial customers and the growth in tons. Expenses jump up and down just because of the nature of, um, providing all of the underlying assets, uh, and equipment needed to provide the services that you provide.
What's the indicator year of when we would, um, no longer provide service to Flemington?
We, we need to go ahead and give notice. There's a hundred eighty-day notification period. So we need to give them really notice, uh, so that we can terminate that service no later than December thirty-first.
Okay, uh, okay, okay.
Here's your little, here's your little caveat in there is that we, even though it's listed with, with asterisk spot tonight, we wouldn't expect any action tonight. Really like to go back and take a look at what Commissioner Frazier said, that maybe tweaking those commercial rates a little bit in order to drive these others down some. Uh, and then bring that back to you because I do need action on it at the February meeting. Whatever you do in an assessment mechanism, we have to show on the assessment notice. And those are going, that information needs to be turned over to, uh, key to those by the first part of February, so that it can appear on the margin.
I agree, Commissioner Frazier, we ought to be at least mid-level, you know?
Yeah, we'll be back.
We ought to be at least mid-level with.
I think there's a lot more need out there for long roll-offs.
There are. And the other thing that, that we'll be careful of, and I know he knows this, is that, um, as, you know, we'll try not to supplement that too heavily because the cost of providing the household service and maintaining the assets is not going to go down. And so we don't want to infuse it, count on infusing it with the current high-growth model we've got that may level off some. And then have to come back and really.
Come back and really, yeah.
Those households. So, so more, uh, tomorrow, it might just literally increase in the household, but not totally go away.
Okay. I think we can follow that. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, all right.
Well, Clint, you've had a lot to say tonight.
C V B report. With, with goodies.
Well, thank you, man. Thank you, thank you.
Um, solid waste team. Trent, Clint, thank you and your team. Good job working with us.
Johnny Sean.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Mr. Wells, I do, I, I think we, we all do, by consensus, we probably need to be mid-level somewhere in that.
And, and I, and I get that, and we try to pull to, push the commercials, but one thing you have to think of, I mean, we can push that commercial more. But that involves more people, more.
Does it? Okay. Well, that's why, that's why we have you, my friend, to give us all that.
Yeah.
So y'all just.
And we, we believe me, we push it, we try to keep them all out rented.
Yeah.
And even if we do away with Flemington, we're not talking about, you know, just a guy. So I mean, we don't, it's just one guy for one day. So we, we got to push everything else.
Yeah, I understand.
We'll be back up here begging for more employees and trucks and.
So we can't say because you don't have Flemington anymore, you don't need the extra help, huh?
Well, yeah.
I'm helping you out.
There's a whole beach, they have grown so much in two.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
They got ahead of us on that one guy.
Well, just bring, bring the recommendation back to us and we'll, we'll, okay. But I understand very well, and your point is very well taken. You don't want to price it so much that you lose customers. Then you got another whole problem because now you got to make up that difference from somewhere else. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, also, I know we talked a little bit about this offline and, and, uh, I really wanted to mention again, Clint, that you've met the number of trucks that come in and out. You're saying as many as probably twenty?
There, there's three trucks that normally we'd, we like to keep three trucks in rotation all day long.
You talking about the tractor trailers?
Tractor trailers, the poor trailers out, and, and they've been doing good. We, we've had some issues in the past, but we.
Well, and, and the, the thing that is, is concerning that could possibly happen, and you've always tried to put all that in the background, but if they have to stop for three days because that track's out, we're in a jam.
Oh, yeah.
And I know we had mentioned about trying to look at another site on the other end of the county. Now, you're having to haul it from as far away as Walterville all the way to the, to the other end down there. We know that we're going to have subdivisions on the other end, and I'd like to see something done, Joy, if we could. I mean, Long County's got to do something. Four hundred homes being put on Palmer Road, is that right? And I don't want us picking their trash up, but I wouldn't mind their trash coming across our tippins.
Yeah, they're going, I think, a little, little, I'm not, their, their trash, I think their hauler's going straight to Broadhurst.
Yes.
They're not, they're not going to Savannah where Waterville's is. Um, so the problem with that is, is that that, that we don't need, you know, our most lucrative thing, because they got curbside collection over there for a private hauler, as you know, is if we were an interceptor between where they were hauling, then we could become a staging point, which, which would be awesome for them and us. We could get, we could get a portion of out-of-county tip fees. Um, but given that scenario, they're cheaper just to go straight to Broadhurst with their trucks.
Yes, I, that is right now. And, I mean, you know, wh- what we're talking about in growth is, I mean, you're going to go to Beards Creek on one ninety-six eventually with all the growth on one ninety-six. And I don't want us to have just a pile of seagulls flying neither, but I also don't want us having trash and it's that away scattered from those railroad tracks slam to Long County and right on. And, um, the only way we can do away with that is shorten the hauler, you know, tell them, if you, if, if it's got to be cleaned up, y'all gonna have to stop and clean it up. And the issue about Flemington, I know that you've got one man that's been out there doing it, and I'm going to tell you, that's way too dangerous. The streets is too narrow, you got a vehicle on each side of the road, and that's, uh, I follow them throughout it. And I, I, I saw that, that's not going to work either, so.
Well, Flemington was fine when it was little, we could use the, the karate cans on the front of trucks, but now they build up, the streets are so small and the cul-de-sacs, we can't even turn a truck around. You know, we, um, perhaps, right now with Long County to shake the end, I hate to say it, but I believe they use our convenience center as much as we are out there.
Thank you, sir. We got to get Mr. Uh.
Thank you.
If you come, if you come see us more often, we let you talk more. Thank you, friend.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and my new Commissioner in my district, Mr. Blunt. Nice to meet you, sir. So I come before you bi-annually to offer our update, January and July. I don't have a whole lot of numbers in here. We do a lot more pictures and explanation, but I wanted to offer Mr. Blunt, if he needed or wanted to know more about what the C V B is, I'd be happy to meet with you offline to tell you more about who we are and what we do, other than just this update, if you felt like you wanted more. So we do the newcomers briefings on Fort Stewart's. We started doing those last fall. And we bought twelve opportunities last year and we really enjoyed it going. So that's where all your new soldiers and families in process, they are required to go through there. So that's our opportunity to, um, tell them thank you for their service, um, welcome them to their new community in a lot of instances. We actually went out there today. Lily and, uh, Mr. Joe Ford and myself were out there welcoming soldiers and families. So this year we actually bought fifty opportunities to go out there. We'll probably do forty of the fifty, um, because that's a little optimistic since we have to spend about three hours out there setting up, cleaning up, and actually doing all the talking. Um, some of my most interesting conversations with those gentlemen have been, uh, where'd a whitewater raft, um, which there's not a lot of that in South Georgia. And then, um, last, right before Christmas, had a discussion with a young man who said that we pe- uh, you people don't know how to drive. Um, and that's why, he was telling me, explaining to me the routes that he was taking around. And I was like, why are you going that way? He's going the longest possible way. He said, because you people don't know how to drive. And I said, well, you people is mostly you people now. So it's not a lot of, it's a lot of people from out of the area, which is great and we love it, but I don't know that we can blame the local people for the driving patterns.
No.
So we do, um, give prizes away at this and that forces those gentlemen and ladies to come out into the community. So they come to our office to pick those up, and that's the pictures you can see on the left and the right. Um, our bi-monthly spouse tours, so those are for new military spouses, um, Fort Stewart and Hunter, we've done both. Uh, we did all those all through the fall, um, since we've last been here before you. So we got to go to, um, the floor, floorbells before they close. And on the right-hand side, always one of my favorite things to do is teach the ladies and gentlemen how to throw a cast net. Uh, most of them have never touched a cast net. Most of them don't know that Liberty County is coastal. Um, the ick factor on that one is always putting the cast net in their mouth. Um, they don't ever really want to do that, but this young lady did. Um, I also have a really hard time teaching this because I'm right-handed, but I cast left-handed. So I have to reorient myself in how to do it. So we have a good time. Um, we also work very hard to promote all the places and the tastes of Liberty County, so we take a lot of, or most of our own photography and video. So that requires, we visit all of the restaurants and places that visitors might want to come in our community. And keeping in mind that a lot of our military families, they are visitors. So it could be somebody's mom that's coming to visit them for Thanksgiving. It could be they just got here and they don't know anything about this county. So we make sure that we keep all of this up to date, which requires a great deal of work. All things Christmas in Liberty County, of course, we, um, handle the Christmas parades. That top-left photo is our, our commentators. Miss Dawn Baker there in the middle is from Riceboro, Georgia, just like I am. And then we have Santa's mailbox at the Bacon Frazier House. Um, we had about three hundred Santa letters. Uh, First Presbyterian in particular keeps us very busy. So, um, Santa responds to all the littles to make sure that they get their Santa response. Uh, we attended both the Flemington tree lighting and then we helped with the Heinzville for the holidays, which is the Heinzville tree lighting. We decorated Gap Park this year, which is the little park between the old Labor Department building that you guys have, um, and the lawyer's office on the other side. Lots of families out there using that to take their Christmas card photos, or they had family in town. Um, the Heinzville Fire Department lent us this vintage fire truck, so we got that in there. We had a wrecker service bring it in. It was, it was very magical. People loved it. Uh, pictures, pictures, and more pictures. Like I mentioned, we do most of our own photography or we partner with local photographers. So anything that we can do to get a pretty picture to help sell our community is something that we're very interested in. We also use a lot of user-generated photography, so most of you probably know Mr. John Henderson. He takes a sunset photo just about every single night. So he is one of our favorites to use, um, and he's very generous to allow that. So awards and tours, the photo on the left, the Association of Defense Communities named me a defense community champion for the country. So we're, I was excited to get that award and we'll find out about the national award in the next couple of weeks. Um, Bobby, who is in our office, and Mayor Pro Tim Washington from the city of Midway, they went, um, on a familiarization tour in Alabama. So Alabama does a really good job at marketing their civil rights trail sites. Um, we actually have one here in Liberty County. Does anybody other than Chairman Lovett know what that site is? You do. Dorchester Academy. So one of only two outside of metro Atlanta, and that is located right here in Liberty County. So these two went on this familiarization tour to try to figure out how, how does Alabama do this better than the state of Georgia? So we had folks from all over the state of Georgia on that tour to learn how we can market our sites better like they do. And then on the far right, we do give lots of tours over office. Of course, people love the Bacon Frazier House. This particular young lady and gent came from Savannah. She was tracing her ancestors and had traced them back to the Frazier family. I spent about an hour with them, given the tour and all the folklore and the tales, and, um, we have some old history books in our office. So we looked through those and we talked about the flowers and we did all the things, um, which they really enjoyed. And then they went on to visit the Midway Museum. Um, Liberty County's birthday party was back in October. That is a chamber luncheon, but the C V B is the host of that. You'll see that top-left photo, we did play Liberty County Jeopardy, and if you can't guess who the winner was, it was Chairman Lovett. Buy a landslide and. it was Chairman Lovett, by a landslide, and Mayor Ross does not like it when I say it was by a landslide, but it was by a landslide.
He cheated.
Oh, no, he did, he knew, uh, which was. Um, but it was interesting in a room full of people, how few people actually knew the answers, and a lot of people really learned something.
Very good.
Um, so we're looking forward to doing that again this year. Uh, we do lots of ads, billboards, and more, so these are some of the billboards we've had in the last six months. That bottom is an ad that we have with the state on their electronic newsletter. The right is our new magazine that came out back in October. And then these are ads we've had in national publications. And then we have two billboards on I-95 right now, one at exit forty-two and one at exit thirty-nine. So exit forty-two is where the Buc-Ee's is going, so you're talking about a gazillion cars. Um, so we're gonna try to keep that space as long as we can, yes, sir.
Leah, do you still have the billboard on two oh four?
We do that one during special occasion, so if there's an event, um, I don't have a contract for that one, but we get space.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Um, we did new wall wrap art at Savannah Airport, so we've had this ad, or down on the wall at the Savannah Airport where the baggage claim is, so as you walk out for the last several years, but we just refresh the art. And then bags, bags, and more bags, and, um, I'm sorry that Commissioner Gilliard's not here. We packed lots of bags for him, um, this fall. So we pack those for family reunions, it might be church reunions, it might be high school reunions. In his instance, it was his high school reunion. Uh, but we do bags for lots of different groups that are coming into the community to visit. Again, we wanna give them the things to do, the places to see, and make them feel welcome. Our mobile visitor center, which you've seen this slide before, because I presented it when I was here in July. Um, what I didn't know in July is that George Power was gonna give us eleven thousand dollars to wrap that bus. Um, so it is at Rapid Signs waiting to be wrapped. So it, hopefully, we'll have a ribbon cutting for that in March. Um, and that eleven thousand dollars doesn't have to come out of our budget, we get to put it back in there. So we're very grateful to Georgia Power for doing that.
You're welcome.
Oh, you think? I forgot you used to work for Georgia Power. And then these, this is my only number slide, because our numbers did come out in August, which is when they always come out, and that's for the previous fiscal year, so for FY twenty-three. Um, you can see the, um, rate of employment has gone up, the share of the state has gone up from fifty-eight percent to fifty-nine percent. All of, a lot of the numbers have gone up. The ones on the right-hand side are how we rank in the county, so in FY, or in the region, sorry. In FY twenty-two, we were number four, and FY twenty-three, we're number five. Questions? I think that was my last slide, yep.
Question from Ms. Leah?
I talk very fast.
Thank, thank you, ma'am, and thank you for the goodies.
Yes, sir, and I'm still up here for the next.
Mr. Blunt, and I've met with this gentleman out here, but before the meeting, um, retired. I guess you were at Fort Stewart for a pretty good while?
I was, my last tour, I was here for five years before I retired, and I was here two times prior to that.
But he, the conversations we had with him, um, I mean, I, I think he's a soldier, soldier, and he's somebody probably, that he'd be interested in some of this, um.
I'll give you my card before I leave, sir.
So, um, I think he, his number one goal was to be a general out here, but he let Mr. Kukulo get ahead of him.
Oh, my grandfather was stationed out here, that's how my mother's family got here, is a, um, retired command sergeant major, so.
I know you, I know him very well.
Oh, okay, I will get you my card before I leave, we can link up.
All right, thank you.
I'm up here for the next thing too, sir.
Yes, you are. Uh, government agreement hotel motel tax, and we've been working on that for a little while.
Just a little while.
And the progress is?
We have, oh, sorry.
This is a draft document.
Okay.
Uh, that was prepared by the CBB attorney, and so it's gonna be reviewed by the county attorney.
Okay.
And, uh, basically, this handles the increase in pros-, increase in percentage that was approved by the commission, uh, to go ahead and allocate additional percentage for the special project section of that. Um, and we have started receiving that, and we need the mechanism to go ahead and transfer that money over to a qualifying entity, in this case, the CBB, to be able to handle those funds. And so this agreement makes that happen. Uh, if you could review it and take a look at it, uh, send those questions to me. I'll get them to Leah, we'll let that out, and the county attorney's gonna do it. We'd really like to take action on that in the February meeting.
Okay, so Kelly's, has it already, or he's going to have it?
Yes, we'll talk about it this morning.
Okay, okay. Homework, y'all, homework. We need to get that going, because I know the others have, have already.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, signed theirs, okay.
Yep, so this is just your mechanism to pay that out.
Okay, all right, and that, 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 uh, account is doing fairly well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Don't ask me for a number, because I don't want, I don't want to lie to you.
And the report yesterday was that, what, October was a better month for the hotels in Liberty County?
October was an awesome month, which usually it's a little bit slower after the summertime, but it, it was, it was gangbusters. And that's why we're trying to figure out what happened in October, and hurricane was one of the answers. Um, that forced people this way.
Uh, yeah, I hadn't thought about that, yeah.
So that, that was one of the things, but yeah, lots of contractors, lots of contractors on base.
Never thought about a hurricane being a blessing. Okay, thank you, Ms. Leah.
Yes, sir.
Administrative report?
Mr. Chair, we're gonna do a double header on this.
Okay.
Um, give you some updates, uh, performance appraisals, all our staff are being asked to complete their performance appraisals and have them in, um, by tomorrow, and from there, they will be, these will be used to, uh, get merit increases, as, which will become effective the first paycheck in March. Uh, Midway Fire IGA, uh, Joey updated you guys earlier. Uh, we met with our, uh, Mr. Davis early today, and we're hoping to bring that before you guys to approve that contract in, uh, the February, one of the February meetings.
So it's just on our end now, so Midway has already blessed?
No, no, they haven't, no, sir. Mr. Davis has put, staff met a couple of times, and did, I'm sorry, put a draft, draft on that, and we sent it, uh, today. Mr. Davis met with us today to.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
So we wanna get that ready to go. Uh, also, our county-wide planning workshop, a, a couple of you guys have responded for the Wednesday, February the nineteenth meeting.
Mid-year review.
The mid-year review.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I think most of you guys responded, stating whether or not you wanted to come.
Okay.
Uh, on our get committee, uh, Mr. Bob Sprinkle has submitted his resignation letter, uh, stating due to health challenges, he can no longer be on there, and he's asking the board to appoint someone to fill his slot.
Did we advertise for that before, yeah?
No, uh, we didn't, Chairman, the first time we, when we kicked it off, no, we did not.
Yeah.
Mr. Sprinkle and I, we've had several.
Y'all started, y'all were in the startup group.
Right, yeah, we've had several conversations in the last couple of months, you know.
I- i- in a way, it's specialized work. Um, you wanna have the right person, uh, who gonna commit to it and have some appreciation for what that committee does. Our tradition precedent has been to advertise these positions. I'm suggesting that, let's recommend, let's, 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 let's do advertising, but with the criteria with some, so that the public realizes what.
Can I get with you before we, uh, can we come back?
Want to talk up later, all right, okay, okay, all right, all right.
Okay, this.
I guess he, he's the chairman of our appointment committee.
No, sir, not, not, not on that, Justin.
He's mean on. Yeah, okay, all right, okay, we'll bring it back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Uh, also, on our MOU for the East Plush election, Mr. Chair and Members of Commission, uh, Mr. Davis modified the document, submitted to the Board of Education, they did act on it, and we're waiting for them to submit back to us the executed documents, so that, uh, Chairman got the consigning, and we have that moving forward.
Will they meet the deadline?
Yes, sir.
But, but the documents going back and forth?
Yes, sir, I, I talked to Mr. Jackson, he said that, uh, they executed, and so he's waiting, he's gonna try to get it to us as soon as possible.
Well, good, good.
And the last thing, Mr. Chair, is on our, on our annual planning retreat, uh, y'all mentioned y'all wanna do two half-a-days. On last year, we did the last Thursday and, uh, last Wednesday and Thursday of March, which was the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh. We need to move that, or we can have that time period, move it up, that, the next week, if, if that's more amenable, or move it back on, uh, week in April, which would be the second and third. And the dates earlier for that would be March nineteen to twenty, that's a Wednesday and a Thursday half a day.
I think do like, um, we've done, send those dates out and let us.
Okay.
Select which dates work better.
Okay.
Because I'm not sure we could take. Y'all gonna try to look at calendars tonight, and Commissioner Gillis not here.
That Wednesday and Thursday is the, uh, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
And what I'll do is I'll, let's, per the chair, I'll send those out to you guys, and see which, when y'all like the best.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Mosley, uh, can you, uh, let the rest of the board know what else is going on on February the nineteenth?
Uh, also, on February nineteenth, the, uh, Youth Commission, we've taken a trip to Atlanta to meet with, um, State Representative Williams, and, uh, they'll be meeting with a number of other youth commissioners in the state of Georgia. So they're gonna kinda have like a youth commission day.
So who, who's chaperoning, um, Ms. Murray?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Murray and Commissioner Frasier volunteered to be there.
Okay.
Can't be here too late.
That is my portion of the report, Mr. Chair.
All right.
I'm chaperoning, I know, right? Um, I do wanna point out a couple of things, this is the status report on your CIP projects, on your ongoing capital projects. Uh, I highlight the Health Department facility, uh, they have finished installing all the storm drain at that site. We're in the process of picking some brick and doing some things there. Uh, we are also getting ready to, uh, run the water, uh, to the site, the potable water, so we'll be making a connection to the, uh, Liberty County, uh, to the City of Heinzville system on that. But that is going very well. Footers are pretty much dug, they'll start putting in the, um, um, base and everything to the building. Uh, they're ironed for the base and everything for the, uh, support structure, so that's going along very, very well. Uh, road bank facility is, is still, uh, on the final, very final punch list items.
I haven't been that way lately.
Yes, right, and, and I'll try to si-, send y'all some pictures, um, furniture is being implemented into that, so, uh, making the final touches now towards that move. And then we'll go in there and start trying to take out, you know, the old stuff that's there. Uh, part of that building is gonna be removed. You know, the initial plan of that was to leave the back portion, actually was to take the whole building down, leave the concrete slab.
Yeah.
What we're really gonna try to entertain now, and I'll bring you a cost on, is leaving the red iron parts of that, tearing off the wings, if you will, and having another equipment stores building, just like you've got over next door, which would mean just putting some new skins, aluminum on those roofs, and I'm getting that price. I've seen a preliminary number, and it's very, very, very good. So, uh, I'll have that final price for you, we'll bring it back and let y'all consider.
How will we pay for it?
A modification. I believe there's enough in the construction budget that we've been labeled to save. We're, um, gosh, let me knock on wood when I say this, because we're not exactly finished, but we set aside the contingency and the bonds, and I'm not sure we're gonna be able to use all that contingency. So, which is great, which will use the proceeds then to pay down on the bonds and/or do some of this building, uh, to do that. Uh, US eighty-four connector project, which is a freight connector, uh, has been issued notice to proceed since I did this printout yesterday, it was actually done today, so they've issued notice to proceed on that project. And so you should start to see stuff ramp up over the next several months, uh, as they start clearing that corridor and, and removing, and removing stuff from out there, so that's, that's great. That's been many, 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 twenty years in coming.
Any feedback on my idea maybe about having a groundbreaking, any feedback you, you sent in to me?
I have not, not, just, not, not a lot of energy on the other side from that.
Yeah.
Can try to renew that, I can, I can.
You tried to represent the Williams by that?
I have not. I, I'll, I'll reach out, I know, and it, I said, I said we don't wanna, it won't slow the project down.
No, we don't.
It's, it's still, it's still very doable.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll, I'll make a note to do that.
All right.
The. That EMS, uh, administration, uh, we're having some pre-construction meetings now with the city, uh, and internally to get that on the go, and the Isle of Wight Park, we're still awaiting, we've got some preliminary information from Mrs. Spata, and we're gonna be talking back with her again, so we have not given notice to proceed on that, do we make sure that's cleared? If there's any issues on that, we'll come back to you on that. Uh, Islands Highway Box Culvert is that FEMA-funded project, a, a little bit of what we think is good news. We have seen on their website where they did approve a price increase for us. If you remember, our preliminary cost on that, uh, was pre-COVID. It took about a year for them to approve the project, COVID happened, the escalations went up. They only awarded to us what the pre-COVID was, we requested a supplemental, and we think, we see that's been approved. So that's, that's the good news.
Okay, good.
That's the good news, that'll be less match, as required on our part. Uh, the final thing to note there, you'll, there's an addition there for lighting upgrades to I-95. If you go along exit seventy-six or sixty-seven, you'll notice a lot of lights out there. You may remember that in Splosh, early in Splosh Six, our very first project, uh, was to go in there and try to repair those lights that were cut by the I-95 widening construction. So we did, um, work through EMC, they basically went, and Georgia Power, but basically went through, and, uh, they tried to fix what was there, uh, and it's not working again. So, uh, we, we've, I've talked with Ms., uh, Grant, Brent over at the LCDA, because they actually pay the energy on one of those interchanges. Uh, they are concerned about that also for safety and economic development. So I've told her that we'll assume that to go ahead and look at alternatives towards replacement or upgrade of those things, not just fixing them, and try to, try to get some preliminary construction costs for that. There are still a little bit of funds left, uh, that were earmarked for lighting. So it'll take some supplemental, but we're trying to work on that to get those numbers. And that's on the CIP, and the only other thing that's left on the agenda is, uh, it's two executive sessions items. Uh, one, we'd go in executive session for personnel, and the other's consultation with legal counsel.
Okay. Commissioner, anything else to give the order, open session before we go in executive session? Is there a second? Yeah, yeah, okay, all in favor, we will not go in executive session, as Mr. Brown stated.
...That's what I'm saying. Chair motion come out.
No movement, sir.
Second. All in favor with your hand? Chair motion adjourned. Second?
Second.
All in favor with your hands?
Yep. Thank you all.
Y'all have a good night.